Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call the informational meeting of Tuesday, December 21st, 2021 to order. Our first order of business is committee reports. South Dakota Municipal League Board of Directors, Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you. We had a meeting Wednesday, December 8th in Pierre. It was a good meeting. I think it was our longest board meeting we've had. We talked about all the different bills coming forward in the legislative session, which we know cannabis is going to trump a lot of the time and energy. We talked a lot about the additional funding and some of the direction that the municipal league will play to make sure that cities have the adequate funding that they need for infrastructure as well as housing. We had two different reports, one on the Medicaid expansion. We had a lengthy discussion about that. The board did vote to support that initiative that will be on the ballot, which in years past has not, so I find that valuable information for you all. They will not be involved in the campaign of it at all, but they will be supportive of the efforts. We had another presentation on ranked choice voting. The board did vote to stay neutral on that and not support the efforts of that. They will not get involved in that legislative bill coming forward for ranked choice voting. And so those were kind of the two things. We went over our details of our financials. The municipal league is in solid financial stability. We recently paid off our building, and so we now own the building. And we also have some offices that we rent and also generate some income for the municipal league as well. In the evening, we had a dinner with the county association. A couple legislators did present to us, as well as Commissioner Karski and myself, presented on joint collaboration for what the city does along with Mineha County and a lot of our partnerships that we do throughout the whole county in giving those examples to other commissioners and city folks in the room. So it was super productive. It was a lot of work from meetings to meetings, but I did get a few moments to take in the trees at the Capitol. So if you haven't done that, you need to do it. It's amazing. So that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Metro Management Council, Councilor Kylie.
Thank you. We actually, it was, it was a long meeting, so there's quite a bit to cover, so please bear with me. In the director's report, Director Scott McMahon stated that Metro has experienced improved retention of staff, having received only two resignations of full-time, non-probationary staff this year. One of the operators has returned to the agency as a temporary operator. In 2021, two operators completed the 26-week training program. Three are in training, and five did not complete training, which just illustrates that it's a difficult process to become a dispatcher with our Metro 911. Currently, Metro has three vacant operator positions. Two of those vacancies will be filled with the start of a new recruit class on December 27th. The 911 profession across the nation has experienced difficulty in recruiting and retaining qualified operators, so it's no different there than it is for anybody else throughout the community and throughout the country, as a matter of fact. And the PSCAPs, or the Public Safety Answering Points across the nation, have provided increases in salaries, significant hiring bonuses and other strategies to attract and retain staff. These strategies have had minimal impacts thus far. So again, just illustrates the difficult climate that we are all in in attracting good qualified workers. So the workload and responsibility of 911 operators continues to increase as a result of staffing shortages further expanding the problem. Metro must remain very vigilant and intentional in our recruitment and retention of qualified operators with a desire to provide long-term public service. And then one of the items, we did approve four hours of administrative pay for staff on December 24th. It had been, unfortunately, it was on the agenda for approval of eight. The county, however, did not approve administrative pay for county, so we, we reached a compromise at, at four hours. Then we had approval of a resolution dealing with employee benefits, the, dealing with first responder assistance program. And I think it's going to be a good opportunity for our employees to receive additional assistance as they need it within the EAP program. And that was approved. We also approved item eight, Resolution 21-03, the non-bargaining unit pay. Currently, the, it stipulates a 1.75% COLA for the year 2022. And so that was, that item was approved. Agenda nine, adoption personnel manual revisions, we, we did approve that item as well, as well as item number 10, new PSCAP construction procurement. Metro Communications has identified two significant equipment purchases that will need to be ordered this year in '22, this coming year rather, in '22, to secure quoted pricing for the Motorola radio system and the dispatch console of furniture. Even though it's not going to be needed until '23, we needed to get that order in now so that we would have it in time. So that was approved. Also, item number 11, revision of Joint Public Safety Answering Point Agreement as supplement to Joint Cooperative Agreement for Communication Services. The Section 5 of the Joint Public Safety Answering Point Agreement obligates Mineha County to deposit in Metro Communications Agency account the sum of $2,150,000, so just over 2.1 million, on or before January 31st of '22. The revised agreement changes the date of deposit from January 31st of '22 to January 31st of 2023 for that reason that I just mentioned previously, that it's not really going to be needed until 2023. The county appeared to be appreciative of that measure as well, too. Then we, approval of the 2022 Mineha County Metro PSB lease agreement. Our, our lease with the county is going up 78 cents per square foot. And so the total will be $54,477.77 paid in 12 monthly installments of just over $4,500 per installment. And Metro received, in the next item, Metro had received unbudgeted awards from local EMS funding and statewide 911 Coordination Board funding in 2021, thanks to the, our staff being able to locate these funds. The, in, so we agreed that the increased operating expenditures in the amount, or two increased operating expenditures of $15,000 and capital outlay in the amount of $7,000 funded by the increased revenues in the amount of $22,000. So what they actually secured will pay for that. And then lastly, appointment of the Agency Committee Committee to enter into wage negotiation with the Ask Me Local, number 3516, Police Chief John Toome, Mineha County Deputy State's Attorney Drew DeGroot, Metro Communications Business Manager Anna Recker, and Metro Communications Deputy Director Amy Chase, and Metro Communications Director Scott McMahon will be on that committee along with Mayor Tenhaken and Commissioner Karski representing the Metro Management Board. We happily adjourned after that.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. We do have on the agenda Multicultural Center Board of Directors, unfortunately, Pat Starr cannot attend this meeting, so we'll get that scheduled for our next regular meeting, first one in January for that report. At this point, we have councilor remarks. Anybody want to throw something out there at this time? Councilor Kylie?
It was, I took advantage of an opportunity that had been extended to us, and I attended the Reefs Across America event at our new state veterans cemetery. And I was just so pleased when I rounded the corner there to make the approach into the cemetery, that the vehicles, so many people showed up, that the vehicles were parked out on the gravel road as well, too. They could not handle everybody on, on the cemetery grounds. So it was very well attended. It was only about 12 degrees with, as you can imagine, a wind on the hill there, but not a complaint. I did not hear a complaint. It was a beautiful ceremony. And so it was, it was great to have. In fact, the, the CEO of Reefs Across America attended the event and spoke, so it was well attended. Counselor Brecky was, was there as well, and maybe others. It was hard because, to spot others, because it was such a big crowd, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Brecky.
Yeah, I want to just ditto what Councilmember Kylie said. It was, there wasn't a dry eye there either. It was just a fabulous ceremony. And if, if you don't, aren't familiar with it, it really is all around the world at cemeteries that this is taking place. So you're, you're just one of, all of the veteran cemeteries all over the world are having the same ceremony. So it was very powerful. But I also want to just take a moment to thank my fellow council members for your lovely gift of a plant that my father-in-law is passing away. I just lost him rather suddenly in '91. Things can happen pretty suddenly. But I do want to thank you for your show of support. I married my husband 43 years ago, and my own father passed away when I was 23. And my husband met my family at my father's funeral, so he never got to meet my father. So my father-in-law has been my father-in-law for 43 years, and I only had my own dad for 23. So it was like losing a father again. So I did want to also mention, in conjunction with the, the wreath ceremony, he wasn't buried out there, but he was a Korean War vet and a very proud one. And he was also a former post commander, I know, at the local American Allegion Post. And so at his, his funeral, the military honors were just incredible. I mean, again, talk about not a dry eye. There were 20 military guys there because of his standing as a Korean War vet. They do a special Soldier's Cross-type ceremony that was just beautiful. And then they did the full 21-gun salute and the, the flag and, I mean, everything, full honors. 20 different military personnel there to, you know, to celebrate his journey. And so that was just very powerful. And again, just want to thank you for your support and, you know, just hats off to the military services that are provided in this community by the military, but also the things that we're beginning to do for our military.
Thank you. Any other council remarks? Seeing none, move into our first presentation, the COVID-19 update by our Director of Public Health.
Good evening, Council. Charles Chima, Public Health Director. Here today to give an update at your request on the status of COVID-19 pandemic in our community. As we know, so to kind of put things in context, go back to the beginning of the pandemic around the March of 2020. I would see, if you look at active cases as well as the hospitalizations, that the surge we had last November, December up to January was kind of the highest so far. But the other thing you observed from the historical graph is that we're currently seeing the second-highest surge in infections and hospitalizations. So the last time I was here in September, thereabout, as at that time, we considered that the second-highest surge, but we have since passed the level we were in September. So the cases have continued to, to rise as well as hospitalizations. So things are slightly worse than they are today than they were in September. So as of today, this is the second-highest surge we have seen since the beginning of the pandemic. But again, the good news is that it's not the situation where we had last year, where it was, you know, it was very unpredictable. We can see very much that a lot of the cases that are especially those, the severe ones that have been hospitalized, and those ones ended up in ICUs heavily among the unvaccinated. So that's part of why a lot of our effort has focused on advocating and increasing resources to make vaccinations easier. But if we look, so that's kind of the general trend going back to the beginning of the pandemic. If we look specifically at the last three months, again, we'll notice that after, so in the summer, so if you go back to the previous slide, in the summer of this year, there was really a significant decrease in cases as well as hospitalizations. But that, things began to change quickly at the end of summer, when we started seeing the new surge that was fueled by the Delta variant. Things got a bit better in November, so there was a bit of dip, which you will see on the, on the graphs. There's a decrease, but it tends to then kind of return to, to the pre, pre-surge levels. So quickly, within a month, we started seeing a rise again in cases as well as hospitalizations. And we expect this trend to continue for a while, especially considering the new variants, Omicron, that is kind of rapidly spreading in the U.S. and across the world. So it might be a while before we get out of the current surge with the new variants. The last two weeks, things have remained pretty steady. Hospitalizations kind of reached a peak and stayed about 80 to 100 in the last few weeks, which is much higher than we've seen in the last three to, three to six months, you know. Prior, as at the last update, we've probably seen about 50 to 60 hospitalizations a day. In the last two weeks, it's been around 100 hospitalizations per day. Today it's 89. So we'll see if that's, it becomes a trend or if, or if it goes back to the current rates. So a bit of, I know this is, this has been in the news a lot, and it's raising a lot of concern, and people are worried, what does this mean to say we have a new variant? And what do we need, do we need to do anything differently? How do we prepare as a community? So first is, in the U.S., as of today, so there's a more recent update on data that shows that, as of today, now Omicron is now the dominant variant nationwide. So among the new cases that we're seeing, the circulating virus right now is primarily the Omicron variant. And one, there's still a lot to be learned. It's very new, and I imagine, I think the first case in the U.S. probably early December. So it's just so new that we don't have enough information to know what the long-term impact on the pandemic will be. But, but evidence is showing that it's, it's much more transmissible. So we know the Delta was much more transmissible than the original strain. This variant is even far more transmissible than Delta. So that is gonna, that is also evident in the data, within, within a few weeks of getting to the U.S. It's kind of swept across the country, as you can see from the map, besides us and a couple of other states. It's now the dominant strain in the U.S. locally, from the data that, you know, the genomic surveillance. It appears Delta is still the, the, the main strain in South Dakota, but you will expect that to change again quickly following the trends with the rest of the country in the next few weeks to months. Again, we know it's much more transmissible. There is not enough evidence yet to make a final determination on whether it's less severe. Some initial data, especially from Southern Africa, suggests it might be less severe. But that might have to do with demographics of the people that are infected, because that, that tends to be a younger population in Southern Africa. So we don't know what that will look like here in the U.S., whether it will end up being less severe as anticipated. But also, even if it's less severe, it's important to note that this could have, and again, we see what happens, but it could have an impact on hospitalizations. Because if you're having a lot of new cases, even if it's less severe, if you're having a significant number of people infected, it just means that the likelihood of having, you know, a few people who might need hospitalization to manage their infection will increase, with having much more rapid increase in cases. So generally speaking, we would expect to have a surge in cases and likely hospitalizations from this variant if it continues the way it's moving right now. As of today, an update on vaccination. So we, we continue to make progress. We're not, you know, at levels that we'll, we'll feel comfortable with yet, but we'll continue to make progress. At the, at the end of summer this year, we were in the late 40s, so we're about 47.5% vaccinated in terms of those that have received at least one dose of any of the vaccines. This is the two counties, Mineha and Lincoln. We continue to make progress. We'll move from about to close to 63% as of today. That's about 164,000-plus people who have received at least one dose out of the 270,000 people in, in both counties. Just an update on some of the efforts that we continue to work on. So through our collaboration with the state, the state, as we know, through the SDIRS, that's Immunization Information System, the entity that has the data on vaccinations. So, but we've, have a very good working relationship. They've been able to share some of those vaccination information, which has allowed us to create a new dashboard. We know we work a lot, with a lot of partners in the community to continue to advocate for vaccines. But part of that information that we needed was to kind of understand, you know, how to focus on, use a precision approach to target our efforts, to understand which populations and which neighborhoods or communities kind of have lower vaccination rates, to know where to focus our efforts on. And part of what we see is, if we look at the city of Seaford, so this is the map of the two county areas. This is available on the COVID dashboard, that, you know, that is publicly available on the city's website. But what we've done is to create a new, a new dashboard and, on the general dashboard that shows vaccination rates by census tract. So this is much smaller units than, than the county, that allows us then to be able to zone in on those areas of the city, particularly in the northeast and northwest, that, as we can see from the data, has lower vaccination rates. So the, the blue, the blue colors have higher vaccination rates. So that's in the 60 to 70, or over 70%, depending on how the, the shade of blue. But then the yellow and the, the red shows lower vaccination rates in the graphs. So again, you can see a much better version of this on the city website. What this allows us is to then focus on those census tracts that have, that are lagging behind and kind of have more intense efforts, some of which include, as, you know, we, we have an effort that's called, you know, a campaign that we call the Give It A Shot Seaford, which is just, you know, the brand name for our mobile vaccine clinic. And what we do, we've done is we've partnered with Sioux Area Metro, as well as the City Planning Services, to, again, using some of that, that data, understand which communities that we need to target. And we're having more and more community outreaches and also advocating partners, nonprofits, as well as the health system partners to do the same, kind of focusing on those areas of our community that need a bit more support to increase the vaccination rates. So we, I want to use this opportunity to, again, pass the information across to, to the community to say we have the resources, we have the will, and we have the, you know, the people to, to make vaccinations easier. So if any business, which I know we've had some business requests, and we've gone out to those business entities to help their staff get vaccinated. We are so willing to do house visits if necessary. So whatever it takes to provide vaccine access, we're willing to do that. We're having events in the evenings. We're having events in the weekends, again, to make sure that everyone, just by their circumstance, that even if, no matter your work schedule, we can find a time that works for you to get vaccinated. So we're more than willing, if someone, we can go to our website, to the city website on the COVID ad page, you will find the link where you can request for us to, to hold a vaccine event at your church or at your neighborhood or at your business. We also, you can also call 211 if you're not, you know, not, not comfortable with using the website. You can just call 211, and 211 can help you get your information and then relay that to the health department, and health department will make arrangements to go out and make that happen. We've seen some success with this in some of, you know, we've been at some of the grocery stores. We continue to, you know, a lot of people have been able to use this to get their booster doses. But we have also seen quite a few number of people who have, you know, studied their immunization series through the mobile clinics. And we continue to have a more intensive, you know, outreach is planned for, for the early part of next year to see that we target, again, those census tracts that are lagging behind. So I will invite the communications coordinator for the mayor's office, Brian, to give a bit of update on the communications campaign that the city, the city council is aware of that we've been doing since the early part of this year.
Thanks, Dr. Chima. He's a bit taller than me. There we go. Okay, so thanks for having me here today. I'm just here to recap the COVID marketing campaign that we've been doing since March of 2021. So since the start of this campaign, we've really been focused on having a multilingual campaign, recognizing the need to share this across the community with multiple languages. So the billboard you see in front of you, we actually have had this translated into five different languages, the top five in the school district. So we've been sharing this across the community. So the number that you see up there, 4.6 million impressions, so that's the time that our message has been served on a platform, and it's been viewed by an individual. So we've been sharing the message across the digital billboards, social media platforms. So really, again, recognizing the need for this to be a multilingual campaign across platforms and really working to stretch our dollars across the campaign. So you can see the platforms that we've used in front of you, Facebook, Instagram. I think I mentioned the last time we started using Snapchat, so really recognizing the need to reach a younger demographic. We also began running videos, so worked with several community members on some PSA's. Also had the opportunity to share that with the Spanish-speaking audience and film one of those in Spanish with Alex Ramirez, and we were able to produce those in-house. So really, taking advantage of some of our internal resources as well. So this latest message that you see in front of you, make a plan to get your vaccine. So we've shifted our message this last phase to really be more on take action, really more of an urgent message to the community, just recognizing the need to really share the importance and the urgency of getting vaccinated. This last slide, you can see the, the second slide translated in Spanish. So our social media messages were translated into Spanish as well. So the plan going forward, knowing that we've used the, the full $100,000 that was needed to be spent within 2021. So with, with these messages, we can continue the look and feel of this campaign, change the messages as it fits the need to adapt. That's really been what we've been doing throughout this campaign, is continuing to adapt our message. As Dr. Chima shared, the census tracts allow us to really focus more going forward on, on our messaging, on where there's opportunity for increasing vaccinations in the community. So I'll let him speak to kind of their, their continued efforts, but just wanted to share an overview of this, of the campaign with you. Over the past 10 months since March, we were really able to get this campaign up to speed pretty quickly, working with Fresh Produce in town. And again, continuing to adapt our messaging, using multiple platforms, talking with community members, and really elevating the message across our community. So let Dr. Chima speak further. I think he has a message on holiday safety.
So on the last slide, I just wanted to, again, reiterate, we had things done today and kind of really used the opportunity to, to speak to, you know, the, our community members regards to, if we pay attention to what is happening, we see that there's quite an increase in cases. It's already happening in, in UK, that's United Kingdom. And we're seeing that in a lot of communities in the U.S. already, where we're seeing rapid increase in cases with the Omicron variant. And the question is, so what can we do to, you know, prepare for this? And it's, it's the same approach we've been using. Luckily, early data shows that, especially, you know, if you, so what has been recommended right now by the CDC is if you got the Yonson vaccine, it's kind of encouraged to consider the Modern or the Pfizer booster, because it tends to boost your immunity more if, if you make some match in that context. But also, even, it's been shown that if you've received any, you know, either as a booster or as your primary series, the mRNA vaccines, that it continues to protect against severe diseases from the Omicron variant. So even as we're expecting a new surge in infections, if majority of people have received their, their two shots and the, and the booster doses without having at least some exposure to the mRNA vaccines, we expect to have a high level of protection against severe disease. We might see more cases. We might see more people that are vaccinated coming down with infection. But again, you wouldn't expect majority, you wouldn't expect many of them to end up in the hospital if they are vaccinated. So that remains the primary, if someone asks today, what is the primary thing that I can do to keep myself and my family safe in anticipation of this variant becoming the dominant variant in the next few weeks? This remains the single most important thing that you can do, is to make that decision, get vaccinated, get boosted if it's already six months when you got your mRNA vaccine. If it's two months or more when you got your Yonson vaccine, it's time to get boosted. And again, to make it clear, the approved vaccines are available. So if you're five years and older, there is a vaccine for you. And if you are 16 and older, you are eligible to get a booster if it's already, you know, six months when you got your mRNA, or two months for the Yonson vaccine. Testing is also another, remains another important component of this, because the earlier we can know someone who is exposed or, you know, infected, then be able to isolate, then the less likely it is that it can transmit it to others and continue to drive infections up. So it remains a strategy, actually, the federal government is moving in the next few weeks. I think they'll be pushing a significant effort to make free tests available. We know a lot of people have been spending a lot of their personal resources in buying testing kits, and it's kind of getting expensive for some, for some individuals. So part of what the federal government is working on is ordering a lot of vaccine, home-based testing and making those available through primary care clinics, where you can pick up free test kits and be able to use, especially during the holidays. And also, facial coverage and limiting guarantees continue to remain a part of the effort to, again, reduce the community spread. So as we celebrate the holidays, it's important to have, have that at the back of our minds. COVID is not done with us yet. It's still in the community. We have a new variant, and we just need to remain cautious. Again, the message is not fear, but caution. It's to think about it as we go, plan for our holiday travel or for... It's to think about it as we go, plan for our holiday travel or for plan for family gatherings. Think about crowd size, limit indoor crowd sizes and wear facial coverage if you have in a public setting indoors. Again, with that, we're happy to take questions from the council. But just today, again, to summarize, we have about sixty-three percent vaccinated. We believe that number will slightly be higher because we know that data does not include data that goes into the federal system. So if someone got from the IHS or from, you know, any of the federal partners, that data doesn't get reported directly to the state, it goes directly to the Fed. So some of that is not being captured from any hand link on. But based on the rest of us that get our vaccinations from either some of the various false community health or the health departments or other local local partners, all of that is in the state system.
Thank you. Questions? Council members? Counselor Kylie?
I have a question, actually a number of them, so I will yield to any counselors at at some point during my questioning. Doctor, I have a relative who was just diagnosed with with COVID, received the first two Pfizer back shots of Pfizer, and the week of the six-month waiting period to receive the booster contracted COVID. So did not get the booster. Question is, how long after recovery from COVID that he's dealing with now can he receive the booster?
So I have to look at the recent guidelines, but I know typically it's not, to to your point is if someone is having an active infection. Again, generally recommended, if you're if you're having an active infection or if you've received, if you received the monoclonal antibodies in the last ninety days, it's recommended to wait for a period for that to wash out before you get the vaccination. So I can, I need to look up the specific waiting period for if you're having an active infection. But you probably want to wait for a few weeks after the infection to 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 get back to vaccination. But I think for the monoclonal antibodies, if you receive one in the last ninety days, probably want to wait at least a ninety-day period before getting vaccinated. But when you're having an active infection, yeah, it's not a fresh time to get vaccinated. Probably want to wait a few weeks after that.
So he should wait at least two weeks, fourteen days prior to?
Yeah, and I can get a specific, well, the specific guideline today from the CDC. Sunday, do you have that readily available? Yeah, please.
Sandy France, Public Health Manager. Good afternoon, counselors. So the person would need to be out of isolation and feeling better. So they're going to need to wait at least ten days after their confirmation of illness, right? If they received, if they did not receive monoclonal antibody, as long as they're feeling better and their symptoms are are getting better, they can go ahead and get their booster under the advice of their physician. If they receive monoclonal antibody, they have to defer for ninety days after their infusion.
Sure, and at this point, they have not received the monoclonal antibodies. So it would be at least, at least ten, ten to, okay, ten days following. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
And whoever wants to respond to this, we continue to have individuals that contact us and come to public input that deny COVID even exists. The vaccine was manufactured by the government to track us, to keep tabs on us, that the vaccine was not thoroughly tested, that it was rushed, claims that we're in violation of the Nuremberg Code, claiming we are experimenting on humans. What what kind of response do you do you have to those particular reasons and others? I mean, there is a multitude of others as to why they shouldn't get vaccinated.
So my response will be, first is, I would say we are lucky. We're lucky to be living in the greatest country on earth, right? And it's it's a privilege because I think we need to put things in context for people to understand. We're dealing with a global pandemic, but there are too many countries that do not have anywhere near the resources that we have, that I don't have been, I've not been as lucky. I'll give you an example. I have I have first cousins, I have, I have a sister who lives in Australia. And even though she works with a husband in the healthcare system, she's a nurse, the husband is a doctor. It took forever, it was only until recently before their children, their adult children became eligible for the vaccines because they didn't have as much supply as we do here in the US. So even though they were in the healthcare system, they had to endure the terror of having their children be exposed to this for a long time before they became eligible for the vaccine, just because there wasn't enough vaccine supply compared to what we have in the US. So I would say that absolutely, we should be great, you know, many ways grateful for American ingenuity because it is very rare and it's understandable why there is concern to say, hey, how do we have a vaccine so so suddenly? Well, I think the answer is, you know, we have innovators, right? We have the science community that is able to respond quickly to to a threat like this. So we are lucky to have had, to live in a time where the country has the capacity and the scientific engineers to have come up with a very effective vaccine within a short time. And I think in many ways, we're grateful for that. And we've seen evidence that these vaccines are very effective. It's rare, again, think about other diseases that we know that we get vaccinated against. It is rare to see a vaccine that is so effective, particularly at preventing severe outcomes that we've seen with these current vaccines. So this is, in many ways, in modern history, this is the most rigorously tested and monitored vaccine in terms of the scrutiny that has been paid to the adverse effects and to see that these vaccines are really safe and effective. And they continue to update. So, for example, as you noticed in the last two weeks, the CDC has updated its guidelines to show that there is some degrees of differences in effectiveness between the vaccines. And they now have a different recommendations about which ones they consider priority based on, based on the science. So the scientific community is absolutely paying attention and is taking taking these issues of safety and effectiveness very seriously. And I would encourage everyone who who has concerns or questions to please reach out to your personal physicians. And if you don't have one, false community health, you know, have physicians and we have that willingness and, you know, and availability to schedule appointment with anyone who asks questions to have a conversation with a medical provider about the vaccines.
Okay, thank you. So it was thoroughly tested before being released to the public. In fact, I think just yesterday or today marks the one-year anniversary that it was released to the general public, phased in. And in that, in that one-year period, we have literally had millions and millions and millions of individuals who have received this vaccine and with a tiny, tiny percentage that have had exhibited any any type of issues. And those that have had issues, it's hard to determine whether they can be attributed to the vaccine or something else, some other condition that they would have experienced, regardless if they had the vaccine or not. What about the individual, and this is a question I asked the last time you appeared before us. This is my last question, at least for now. I've I've had, I've had COVID, so I do not need the vaccine.
That's that's a genuine concern and and the logic is understandable. However, the evidence and the data shows that immunity from natural infection is unpredictable. So not everyone who can be much more reliant on on immunity from from the vaccine. So we know what happens when you get a vaccine. Not everyone who gets the disease gets a natural, significant natural immunities. In some people, it wanes very quickly. In some people, it might last a few months. So it's very unpredictable to determine, okay, I had infection, does that mean I'm protected or not? The second point I make on that is, is we're shown also with the new variant, with the Omicron variant, because the virus has mutated significantly, it's so much different from the original strain. So if you had COVID last year, it has been shown that the natural immunity is doing a worse job with the Omicron variant compared to the vaccine. So if you're relying on the immunity my gotten from the original strain last year, where they learn with a different virus now in terms of the significant mutation that has occurred in this virus. And it's been shown that immunity is wearing very rapidly for those who are relying on natural immunity. So the best way to prepare and protect yourself and your family is to get vaccinated.
In in fact, the influenza vaccine that we received on a yearly basis, that is is always altered in an effort to deal with the the info, what is the expert's best prediction as to what type of influenza is going to be impacting the population? So that that changes year to year as well.
Yeah, that's just the nature of viruses. That what viruses do is they mutate. So as they are spreading in the wild and they are replicating, errors tend to occur in the replication process. So you end up with new versions of the virus that could be quite significantly different in characteristics from the original one. So the good, with vaccines, you can study that and modify your vaccines to respond to that. But with natural infection, if you're relying on the previous year's infection, then your body doesn't know, doesn't recognize that this virus has changed. I mean, you may not get significant protection from that previous infection.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That last one was a statement, it was not a question.
Mr. Silber, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director, for the presentation. I appreciate how hard you've pushed this topic since you've taken your position. Didn't you have a goal when you started off right away, eighty percent or ninety percent you were hoping, or what was the number again?
Yeah, I think I go, so initially, when we started pushing our new, again, we've we've been doing a messaging campaign since early this year. But when we started the renewed efforts in late June, we were at forty-seven point five percent. So the goal was how quickly can we get to seventy to eight, in that seventy to eighty percent range, which I think we're getting closer. Today, like I said, we are sixty-three percent.
Good, good. So the marketing money in that that we, that was put to this, that's been, that'll all be used by the end of this year? So what's the plan ahead? Are we going to continue a campaign or try to refund? What are we doing from here?
Yeah, that's a good question. So we have, we have, so we have funding from the CDC through the through the state. So there's a specific funding for, you know, rebuilding our public health workforce, but also responding to the pandemic. So at the moment, we continue to have funds to continue to support our marketing campaigns beyond the current exercise that just concluded. So we don't anticipate any shortage of funds in the short term. However, if in the future we run out of the resources that we have, we'd be more than happy to come to the council and say, hey, can you provide us some support to continue this effort? But for now, with the funding we have from the state through the city, from the CDC through the state, we have the resources to continue the campaign in the new year.
Do most avenues work with us too, as far as like donating time and money or whether it's space or TV time or radio, where all the different avenues we're doing, will they? How do you put it?
Say that again, sorry.
Do they donate time towards this, like if you're paying so much for so many ads or this or billboards or this? Are they, I don't know, if it's kind of PSA-type money, I keep thinking, or those type things? Do you get a lot of stuff from businesses where they're helping on their end too?
Yeah, so part of what is changing, so I know, so yeah, the question is about donating, I know, in the in the previous campaign, we did a lot of billboards and kind of a lot of general mass messaging. Part of the the focus we're moving with the new approach, we're taking what we call a precision approach. It's really targeting, you know, populations and communities that are lagging behind. So we are, we are moving more to social media and using less the billboards because we really need to focus on the areas. If you see, obviously, in our community, you have some census tracts that are still at fifty percent, whereas some are already at seventy seven, seventy something percent vaccinated. So it makes more sense to spend resources where the need is more. So we're doing a bit more, you know, targeted approach. So we're going to be using more of social media in the next round of our campaigns.
Yeah, just hoping we're getting the most we can out of our money and we can keep pushing it. My final question is, so somebody's not feeling well and they're thinking, well, I was thinking of getting a booster, but I'm not sure, I'm not feeling great, maybe I should go get a COVID test, but I want to get a booster. I mean, if they're not feeling well already, should they go get a COVID test first before they'd go get a booster? If they were going to have one scheduled, anybody go get the booster? Or is there a, I know there was a timing question.
Yeah, that's that's a good question. I think if if already having symptoms, you know, that are, that might be consistent with COVID, I think the best thing to do for us is to get tested because you want to rule out an ongoing and active infection and deal with that first. When you take care of that, then we come, because think about it, vaccination is for prevention. If you already have COVID today, then the best thing to think about is treatment. And that's, it's good that you raised that question because the community also needs to be aware that the hospital systems continue to encourage and promote the use of monoclonal antibodies. So if someone is feeling sick today, to answer your question, the the best decision is to get tested, right? Get tested and isolate and wait for your result. Because if you're positive and if you begin to experience a worsening of symptoms, then it's best to go in and then get the treatments that are available to reduce your chances of having the severe form of the disease. But once you're done dealing with that and you recover, then you go back to preventive mode, which is then get vaccinated to prevent the chances that you may get infected again or get sick.
Gotcha. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Counsel, other questions? Well, I have a few at this point. You've talked about the first, we had the original variant, then we had the Delta variant, now the the new variant that's out there that's highly transmissible. Is this a trend we're going to see that there's going to be a next variant and it's more transmissible? What do you see coming down the road?
Yeah, so that's it, that's the nature of of viruses, right? Is there will always be variants. The question then is, do we, how many variants of concern that we, you know, might come up that we don't know? So I said this to point out that there are probably thousands of other variants that have come up that have now risen to, you know, global transmission rate for us to be aware of them or to pay attention to them. Because they mutate and new variants form and they kind of compete with each other with regards to which one becomes more dominant than the other. However, once in a while, we have a new one that that develops significant characteristics. We are able to dominate the rest and outcompete the other viruses out there. So we don't know how many more of those, you know, major variants we're going to see before we add of this pandemic. But with each variant, it changes the dynamics of the pandemic. So for example, if it turns out that you have a variant that is, that is in some future, that is less severe, then that might change the nature of the pandemic where, you know, you may not, you may not see as much deaths or hospitalizations as you see today. So we don't know, again, at what point we're going to be out of this yet. But we know that the more we can get people vaccinated, the closer we are to reduce. Because what happens is, when the virus is replicating in unvaccinated people, so kind of wild natural transmission, it's when the other duplications happen and when you have new variants. In a population, that's why you haven't seen a lot of variants coming up from the US, for example, because we started a vaccination program early. Vaccination, variants tend to come up in communities where you have low vaccination rates, where the virus is able to transmit naturally and in the wild and is able to go through all these mutations. So the only way we can get out of all this cycle of new variants to the next is by continue to push vaccinations, not just at home, but globally as well, so that we can reduce the likelihood that we have another variant coming from another country into the US.
I have a question on the on the shots. We have several age ranges in the family that I am a part of, all the way from me down to the very young. It seems like the the younger ones, five, six, seven, I mean, on up, they not getting sick at all from their shots. But some people in the older age group, not me, but some other people have got, they'll take a day or two to recover from a vaccine. Is is that something that's common or is it age or is it something else that drives that?
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's, I wouldn't say it's age alone, there are so many factors. We never can tell, just like we can't say, you know, besides, obviously, if someone is immunocompromised, right? We know there's a higher chance they might have, you know, because they don't have that ability to develop enough resistance as someone that is not. But besides being immunocompromised, we, you know, it could be very unpredictable who may get a severe form of COVID or not, right? You have some children who really get a really bad form and you have some, you know, older people who just do do just fine. The same with with the vaccines, we never can tell who gets, you know, significant reactions in terms of feeling sick. However, even for those majority of people, it tends to be, you know, maybe they might have a fever, they may have a sore arm or they have generalized feeling of ache campaigns. And typically, within one to two days, they begin to feel better and that wears away. So we we can't tell exactly who is going to have, you know, severe symptoms and may warrant maybe taking a day off of work. However, for the most people, for most people that get vaccinated, it's not a, it doesn't require vaccination, hospitalization. Typically, it's just take a day off and get, you know, rest, rest from it. Or some people are able to go back right to work after getting vaccinated. We just can't tell who is going to get the severe reaction.
Thank you. One, last question is, when somebody tests positive, are they notified of the variant they have or just that they're positive for the COVID-19?
Yeah, no, all you can tell from the typical test that are available is do you have COVID or not? In terms of the variants, so that's genomic surveillance. So that's done at the level of the CDC in this case. So what happens is, from the samples, the different samples that come to the state, the state takes a random sample and they send it to the CDC to kind of do spot checks to see what variants is is predominant in the population. So if you go to your doctor's office or you order a home test, it wouldn't tell you, do you have Omicron or Delta? It would just tell you if you have COVID or not. In terms of the variants, that's something that is done, surveillance at the back end between the state and the CDC.
Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, I just, I'll just have one. Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, I just, I'll just have one comment that I observed this morning with my wife, that we're going into the second holiday season worried about COVID.
Yeah.
And it's very disheartening, and it seems like there might be a little bit, it's not only us, it's a lot of people, that it's very disheartening, and it's not as joyous of a season this year because of that. And I, our conversations, it has been stressful for us, but not as stressful as it's been for your health department and the employees that you have. This has been a very long year, a year and a half for you, and for everything that your people have done. And I, I think I can speak for the whole council when we tell you how greatly we appreciate all the hard work that you have put in to help us get through this, and hope that next time you come, the numbers are going back the other way.
Yeah.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move on to our next presentation, which I'm sure will be just exciting as the first, is the election twenty-two update. Tom Greco.
Good afternoon, Council. Tom Greco, City Clerk. I'm excited. We have an election coming up. It's just been a year and a half since our last one. As you remember, the last one was pretty interesting. But we're here in 2022, and I think it's going to be just as exciting. We want people to get excited about this election. You know, it's just a few months away, so we're going to start talk, we're going to start the dialogue about it right now with you, give you a broad overview of kind of what to expect and big things to look at. I'll be back in a couple of months, probably early March, to talk about some of the details about Election Day, because I know a lot of times we talk about processing absentees, you know, kind of the mechanics on Election Day. So today, I just want to give you that broad overview of what's going on, what our office is doing to get prepared for the 2022 election, knowing that we really started preparing after the last election, and really started in earnest over this past summer. So two key dates, April 12th, the regular election, that's set by city charter and also state law. Key things for people to remember for our elections is the voter registration deadline, because we want everybody who's eligible to vote, to vote. So just keep an eye on those deadlines, share it with your friends. The first one is going to be March 28th for the April 12th election. If we have a runoff, that deadline is April 18th. So always fifteen days prior to an election. A runoff, if we hold it, would be on the third of May. There's a very short turnaround between the regular election and runoff election. We've done it before, back in 2014, we did it back in 2018. We have made some changes, well, we made some changes in 2020 that we really didn't see, because we didn't have a runoff. But when I come back in March, I'll talk about some of the things that we're doing to make sure that we could really expedite the ballot distribution process for absentee requesters, and also the processing on the front end. So more to follow on absentee ballots next time I come to you. Okay, these are the things I'll talk about today, just some basic general information. And I want to get down to just our basic planning and, and kind of the resources we're looking at, that our, that our office will be dedicated to. Again, we have the dates up there, April 12th, May 3rd, market calendars, polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM this coming spring. Okay, so general information, there will be five offices on the ballot. Of course, if there are uncontested offices, then it doesn't appear on the ballot. But right now, five offices are on there. But we could also possibly see charter amendments, we can see other ballot questions, and of course, school board candidates. And so you'll be voting on that tonight, the second reading, to combine with the school district. We've done it for decades, so I would encourage you to vote for that. So if we have a combined election, we'll maintain that same relationship with the school that we have in the past through an agreement. They will reimburse us for a certain amount, but essentially we'll run the election. Okay, important dates. The first one I have up there is, is the, when folks could start circulating and submitting their petitions. So in order to get your name placed on a ballot, you have to have a valid petition. That process starts at the end of January, the last Friday of January. And they're all due, they could be due, you could turn them in earlier, but they're due by, they're due by 5:00 PM on February 25th, which is the last Friday in February. So for folks who are interested in running, those are key dates. You know, we get asked a lot, you know, when can I fill out my paperwork to get on the ballot? Well, that's the process. You go through, fill out your nominating petitions, get your signatures, and turn them in. And as long as they're valid, then your name will be placed on the ballot. Other items that are up there of note for you, February 11th is the deadline for charter amendments. That's basically the sixty-day mark prior to the election. And then as we progress, you just see sort of the election unfolding. After the nominating petitions are turned in, here in Carnegie Town Hall, we'll have a drawing for candidate order on the ballot. As we go through March, we'll open up absentee voting. That'll coincide with the start, with the end of voter registration. So again, in terms of absentee voting, the mechanics on Election Day, I'll talk to you about in March when I come back here. But for folks who think they want to vote absentee, once we start the new year, you can request your absentee ballots for all elections for the entire year. So if you're interested in doing that, I would encourage people to contact their county auditors or go online, fill out the paperwork and get it turned in. Then obviously, we'll stop absentee voting in person the day prior to the election, and of course, the election's on April 12th. So what we'd be looking at, what you would be looking at, if we, if we find that we're going to have a runoff, we'll do a drawing the next morning right at 8:30, and start the process for ordering, requisitioning our ballots, getting them built. And then from there, we just run into the entire process again, except for the runoff, and of course, in a condensed time period. One thing that I don't have up there, and I probably should have put it up there, is the official canvas. So we'll have to canvass, if we do have two elections, we'll do two canvases. But the official canvas for at least the April 12th election is currently tentatively scheduled for April 19th. So I assume that's going to happen. And that's important, because if we do have any charter amendments on the ballot, they're effective thirty days after the official canvas of votes. And we get all the way down to May 17th, which is the start of terms for newly elected persons, and also the election of the chair, vice chair, and the operations committee members. So a lot of key dates up there, and a lot that happens within a short period of time. So obviously, just keep your ear to the ground, and just keep a tab on what's going on. We'll make sure we hit all those, those key dates, and of course, keep you updated as we go throughout the process. Okay, last week, you passed an ordinance changing the district, the district and the precinct boundaries, really named designations. I am putting up the same slide that I had last week, just as a reminder that we will have six new precinct designations, and we're also extending the western boundary of precinct 117. That land that's circled there does not have any registered voters in it. But again, we're keeping an eye on the precincts, and I'll talk a little more about that in a few moments here. Okay, campaign finance. So concurrently, when we're talking about the elections in general, we also have campaign finance requirements. We follow essentially state law for legislative candidates. I have key dates that are up there. And so, you know, as the process evolves, it's incumbent, obviously, upon candidates or ballot question committees to make sure that they're following the law. If they have any questions, they could always contact our office. We don't provide legal advice, but we can certainly point them in, in the right direction. I also just want to reiterate that we had changed the campaign finance requirements a couple of years ago prior to the 2020 election. And just in my observation for the 2020 election, and basically after we made that change, it's worked out quite well. So now we have, those municipal PACs are essentially on the same reporting schedule as the candidate campaign committees. And, you know, in the end, there's actually more reporting by candidate campaign committees and PACs than there has been in the past. Okay, just in terms of planning, just some, some key pieces of data that I wanted to pass on to you. First, when we're talking about precincts and polling places, we've had the opportunity, and we continue to do it, with the, with the county auditor and Denise and Tamara, we've been visiting all of our polling places over the past couple of months, and we'll finish up the last fifteen or so in January and February. Just getting eyes on, kind of reevaluating ADA accessibility, and also, you know, maintaining those relationships with the polling places, because they, they really are a key resource for us and for the counties. Remember, one of our goals throughout the year, between the county and the city, with the counties and the city, is to make sure that we're all using the same polling places, so that voters don't face any confusion over the course of time. But just remember that we do have seventy-four precinct total, at least for the regular election. And that includes three voter precincts outside city limits, but within the school district. So school-only voters. Just bringing that up, just to give you an idea of the scope and the number of precincts that we're dealing with. And they're all located across, right now, fifty-two different locations. And there's a T next to that for tentative, because we're still working through some changed locations, or places that we can't use. So more to follow on that, and we should have a finalized list in the first or second week of January. But what we're looking at as of today is six new precinct designations, what I spoke about last week and a few slides ago, and also eleven different, I have new polling places, but it's important to note, they're new polling places since someone's last election. So for Minnehaw County residents, in Sioux Falls, it's generally the general election of 2020. Lincoln County, their last election was, was a special election in October. What we are going to do is make sure that we send out postcards, just reminding people where their location is, because it could be different from the last time that they voted, and we just want to apprise them of that. The other good news when it comes to polling places, as you might recall, we had to discontinue the use of a lot of polling places in 2020 due to COVID. Several of those places have come back online, and they'll serve as polling places again. So, you know, that familiarity for the voters is obviously very important. But we're looking to hammer that down, because sort of the lay of the land there is important for our logistics and our supplies, which Denise takes care of for the election, you know. So we'll keep a handle on that and make sure that we're ramping up and getting ready as the months draw on. The other piece is election workers. You know, we're actually in a very good position with election workers right now. We haven't made any phone calls, but, you know, we have a database of about a thousand people right now that we put together over the past month of people who've worked elections since 2016 for the city or for the counties. And I think we have a good pool to pull from, but also, you remember back in 2020, we also gained a lot of new workers, which is great in terms of election boards and sort of building that bench for workers. One of the challenges I think we're going to run into as we solicit workers for these elections is just making sure that we have the right people in the right spots, because there was a lot of movement in 2020. So we want to make sure we keep our workers happy, and keep those engaged that want to remain engaged in it. So that's something that Tamara will be working on, and traditionally, we will start making phone calls or sending emails in early January. So what we're looking at are sixty-seven superintendents, because as you recall, even though we have seventy-five precincts, we do combine some of them into one voter registration list. So we're looking at sixty-seven superintendents, about a hundred and sixty deputies. And as you may recall from the budget discussions earlier this year, we did increase the price, the stipend, it's modest, for the superintendents and deputies by about $10, to kind of keep us on par with what the counties are doing. But we'll also be looking at workers for absentee processing. So in the past, we've had two great workers work down at the county for us, you know, accepting people there, you know, as they come in to vote absentee in person. But what we're going to look at doing this year, and what was done to a large extent in 2020, is hiring even additional people for the later parts of the day to sort through those ballots, make sure they get organized, check signatures, and get them ready for the election boards, or the absentee boards on Election Day, which you also see up there. We'll also be looking for six absentee boards, so that's about twenty-four people, plus a supervisor, and four resolution boards. So that's actually good news, too. Just after the last general election, Minnehaw County acquired another tabulating machine, one of those DS-850s. So this year, we'll have four tabulating machines to run the ballots through. We'll probably approach it as we have in the past. We'll dedicate one solely to absentee ballots from the morning through the completion of counting absentee ballots. And in this case, we'll have another three to run the Election Day ballots that evening. One final reminder, we do have a website, www.soufals.org backslash election. It's a great resource. We continue to build on it. This is just a screenshot of what we have out there. Would encourage people, you know, whether they're a voter, or whether they're somebody considering a candidacy, to go and check that out. One of the key items is up in the top right under resources. We, since 2018, we've put a very handy election manual together for people interested in running. It kind of walks you through the process. It doesn't provide legal advice, but it does provide a lot of information about key dates, what you could expect, everything from those petitions, circulating dates, down to when we're going to be publishing notices in the newspaper. So we try to give candidates as much information as possible, but also the public, so that they understand what's going on. Because we follow the general election laws, but there are some unique laws within our own city ordinance that we try to explain and let people really understand what's going on. So again, great resource. I encourage people to look at it. The other thing we have there, check your voter registration on basically the center at the bottom. That leads right to the voter information portal that the Secretary of State's office has. Again, encourage people to check that, make sure their registration's up to date, down to their current location, their address. If it's not, visit your county auditor so that you could get your registration updated. So we'll be talking a lot over the next couple of months about voter registration, absentee voting, and of course, amongst ourselves in here, we'll be talking about just the logistics and getting ready for the election. So that's all I have for now. Again, I said I'd come back probably late February, more like early March, and talk more in detail about what you'll see on Election Day. You know, some other things that are going to be coming up, you know, over the course of the next couple of months is, we'll finalize obviously any charter amendments, if, if there will be any school board candidates, city candidates, so that ballot will start getting built, and we'll, we'll get that out to people as quick as we can. In 2020, we were really able to leverage the total vote system, that, the system that the counties use, insofar as through the voter information portal, that area that I said you could check your voter registration. People were able to see the city election dates, they were able to pull up their sample ballot. We're looking to do that again, again, to make sure we inform people as much as possible. The other thing that we did back in 2020, and 2018 for that matter, a large use of social media to get the word out, to make sure that people understood when those key dates were, and we'll look at doing that again this year. So that's all I have. Subject to any questions.
Counsel, questions? Counsel Erickson?
No question, but Tom, you know, I ran this by you a little bit too. Maybe I didn't. I can't remember if I did. Maybe. We'll see. I know there's a bill coming in the legislature talking about combining elections. This isn't about our specific election coming up, because it would not impact that. But just want to make it known that that potentially is, is coming. I know that the municipal league does not support it and is looking at some compromise as far as, could we just make sure that all city elections are the second Tuesday of April statewide? So it's all consistent and everything is the same, and that has to be with the school and city elections. So I know there's some working with that, so I encourage you to stay involved with that. I really, really love your expertise and all the information and knowledge that you have is phenomenal. The timing with it being during a major election that you're going to be running is going to be difficult, maybe, but I just would encourage you to stay involved with that and speak your mind as far as what, what you see happening with that. The intent would to be making it for June or November. And so each municipality could choose, do you want to have your election in June or November? And there's all sorts of stuff. So who knows if that will pass in the legislature or not, but something that certainly want to keep an eye on, so.
Right. We'll keep an eye on it. And yes, you did share it with me, and I do think it's something that the council would really want to seriously look at. It has, you know, some pros, it's got a lot of cons, in my opinion. But, you know, it's definitely something worth looking at.
Yeah.
And, you know, trying to build that consistency across elections, I think is a good thing.
Right.
It's just a matter of timing.
Yeah. And, and like I said, maybe it's just having the school and, and the cities have them together, and having it be consistent. I know the school districts kind of bounce around from June to May to sometimes April when we have ours, but it was always the Howick bill, that Howick brought this bill forward several times. And I, I know it's, I believe it's Will Mortensen bringing it this time. So we'll see. I haven't seen the draft, but just for you to stay engaged. So, thank you, and thanks for all your information. You're always so thorough, and I know it's a lot of work, and no one does elections like you, in my opinion. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Other council members?
Seeing none, hearing none. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For your ever, it's a great presentation. Just been one of the top, top two tonight, I think.
Is it a tie?
This time, we'll have public comment. If anybody would like to talk on either of our two subjects, now is your time to come forward.
Good afternoon, everyone. Linda Oliver again. You are violating the Nuremberg Code. The vaccine is experimental. It has not been experimented on people before it was rolled out. It was experimented on dogs and animals, and everyone, all of those animals died, and yet they still put it out. And yes, you are violating the Nuremberg Code, because international courts filing against Gates Fauci and Alderichris, and the international courts have filed a- against Gates, Fauci, and Alderturis, and, um, the international courts have filed a, uh, criminal case against them for crimes against humanity for this very thing, and it says 2.0 Nuremberg trial, or is moving ahead despite the threats from the, the tyrants. So do what you will, but think about it. And this is the patent for it, so if it's a patent, it was not natural, it was man-made. Okay, get something from nature that was patent. And the Supreme Court says, like I said before, if you take it, you're no longer human, because it changes your DNA, and it has things in there that uploads you to the internet, so that they're going to be rolling out cryptocurrency, so you, whatever activity you do over the internet, it gives you credit for that. And that means watching ads, watching videos and stuff like that, and you're going to have to do these things or you have to get boosters if you take that vaccine to stay alive, if it don't kill you first. Those are the true numbers, the VAERS reporting of deaths, injuries, um, uh, what do you call it, miscarriages, um, all kinds of things, and it was very low then. This was back in August, August, September, October, yeah, August, Sept, in September. And, um, now as I looked on the line this morning, it's up to 950,000 people either died or between that death, injury and miscarriages and God knows what else, and that includes children. And yes, there has been no deaths from COVID. COVID is a flu. What's killing people is the vaccine and what's in the vaccine. Those vaccines, those people are getting into the, going into the hospitals in intensive care, are vaccinated people. People do get sick who haven't been vaccinated from the vaccinated, because they are bioweapons and they are shitters, so it's best to stay away from them. CDC continues to be dishonest about vaccines data reporting and the dangers of it. All this is found on the internet. This shows you avemectin does work. And that drug you guys are rolling out for people in, in the hospital to use along with the, um, uh, the, uh, breathing support is killing them, it's not helping them. They, they're being paid to kill us. They're being paid to kill us. And everybody who's pushing this is getting paid, and people are dying, not right. I know you probably can't see all those, but those are the injuries, things that can happen to you if you take the vaccine, including death, most of all. This is, oh, just there, the summer, oh, you got it, turnt, okay. This is how they were back in, oh, I'm almost out of time, huh? Let me, I'm not going to do that one, hold on. This is their plan, if you don't take it for workers, um, work for the government, police officers, nurses, doctors, they planned on putting you in, um, concentration camps. That's their plan. So do what you will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Five minutes are up. Any other public input at this time? Last call. You've heard that before, last call. No other public input? I'm going to say this meeting's over, thank you.